Got to put the kink in her. Put the kink in her, you know, plans for early travel. Any day. Where is she? Yeah. I hear that's really a nice place.
You know my exercise place now?
What?
It's my driveway. And if I start walking up and down behind everybody tonight as I try to get my pickpicks points up. When I'm getting close or it's night and I don't want to walk in the neighborhood at night, but I want to get my, I walk the front side walk in the driveway. And it's got you on your steps.
He's doing those.
And so last night we went to the basketball game. Got home about 11:40, like 300 steps. So last night at midnight, I was worried. Well. Yes, yes. I told Chris last week, I said, if I let you know all the options. Last night at 10 o'clock, walking in, this was last week.
I did not, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
We're getting a printer for Christmas, so hopefully we haven't had a printer in ages.
I always print one out. And I'd usually write some notes. Well, I was in a hurry getting here, and I left it in my suitcase at the house.
Yeah, some of them, well, some of them, all of these are from somebody internal.
And I got to the top of the driveway and said, oh, gosh, I got the notes. Oh, shoot, they always have one at the meeting. I'll just use them.
Not today. I, um, we haven't had a printer in ages. And so.
Well, yesterday and the day before.
And so finally, when the boys were asking, what do you want for Christmas, I said, I'm a printer.
Well, he doesn't hear how I feel about it, but I was.
Oh, a Yadi cooler. Those things are expensive.
It's a soft side. One hour's about $3.99.
Yeah, well, that's around, that's around $1.
So I haven't plunged into that one yet. My son had one though, that was a soft side.
You just have to throw it away.
They moved the zipper on the thing, so it's, they enhanced the design of it. He said, oh, this is the best thing. He used it all the time.
Well, we use our cups, but what, sometimes if we've got a baby like that, we're trying to get it together. Although both of them can have been on the weekend. But we'll tell them to, it's time.
Clock covered, or is it?
One, two, three.
Let's take cover up or it's not there.
Good description.
Oh, there it is.
Ready to start. But they, um, Richard Lemay has wiped out last year.
Oh, gosh, really?
No, I haven't heard any updates. I'm sure that they're, I'm sure they're having a hard, I'm sure they're having a hard time getting people. They still won't build unless they have at least, I think they want two tenants out of the three.
I think, yeah, I'll just holler at her and tell her we're, it's seven.
So has he started? He hasn't done therapy yet?
Um, no. I don't worry about Bart doing this. He's done this all over the state for 23 years, so.
That was joyful.
Yeah.
I want to call the December 21st, 2017 meeting of the Fairmont Municipal Planning Commission to order, please. We're going to start out with Citizens Forum. I have something I want to start out with. I want to make sure everybody, if you haven't already, go by the Founder's Park on Campbell Station and look at the lights. Every year, the maintenance department outdoes themselves with the light, Christmas lights there, so be sure and go by and look at it. I find it interesting that every time we go, one, we can't find a parking place, and two, it's a varied age group of people that are there. I'm surprised at the number of teenagers who are there looking at Christmas lights, but it's really, so my little ones like it and I like it, and everybody in between.
And we have carolers from time to time, so.
So it's a real, real nice display, and I know the department works really hard and for several months to get that together, and it really shows.
And tomorrow's your last day for Santa letters? Tomorrow by noon, I think?
At least, that's your last day. Does anybody else have any comments or questions they have that don't relate to any of the items on the agenda? In that case, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. Bart, do we have anything that's not going to be on the agenda's schedule?
Uh, no, ma'am.
Okay.
Approve.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Approval of minutes of the November 16th, 2017 meeting? Any changes or comments?
Move for approval?
Second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
I abstained, I wasn't here.
You got that, Bart?
Mark, Bart.
You don't look like Mark.
So with that, we'll move on to item number four, discussion and public hearing on a request for a variance from the distance between driveway requirements and the driveway and other accessory, accessways ordinance in association with the requested access on Dixon Road, parcel 001, tax map 161, 524 Dixon Road, 44.8 acres, zoned R-1, Richard Lemay applicant.
Okay, this request is, is for a small access variance for the spacing of a new access point along Dixon Road from an existing driveway that's immediately adjoining to it. It, it's, it will be for the purposes of a, of a rural subdivision that you'll be seeing in a, in a month or two. It'll be a large lot, sort of rural estate type subdivision, so it'll be a low traffic Dixon Road is, is classified as a collector, so the normal spacing for that type of road is, is 200 feet for, for new access cuts from, from existing access cuts. In this case, they're proposing to be 155 feet from the driveway to the north, which constitutes a 45-foot variance from the existing standard. We've looked at it, and the town engineers looked at it, and, and we both feel that it's, it's reasonable from the standpoint of, of the existing topography in the area and the site distance along Dixon, along Dixon Road, along with the fact that it'll be a low traffic generator. I've got, I've got a couple of images here. This one's a little hard to see, but basically, the distance will be from here to here on the screen, so that's about 155 feet, and so they'll be bringing the access point in right about there and, and coming up into the property and then opening up for, for, again, a small subdivision. One of the concerns that we did have when we were out on the property was, I've got to turn this off. The site distance along Dixon Road, particularly to the south, is, is a little problematic, and so that was one of the concerns we had and, and one of the reasons why we think the variance request is appropriate, particularly to the south. If, if you're looking on, on the south image, that's a very blind hill. So we were trying to strike a balance between improving the site distance from the top of that hill down to where the cut was going to be relative to the spacing from the driveway to the north.
Bart, can I ask you really quickly, looking, can you tell me when I'm, I'm looking north, am I looking towards town or am I looking away from town?
Towards town and up towards Kingston Pike.
Okay, thank you. It's already in your.
So looking, looking at these images on the screen, Bart, where are they asking for the access to be placed in relation to that hill?
I, I, I took this image off, off of Google Earth and I, and I placed, you know, the perspective of the shot from about where the, you know, the cut would be. So, so you're essentially standing where the cut would be and looking north and south.
Okay.
So.
So that, if, if we didn't allow the variance, where would the cut have to be?
You'd actually have to get further to the south and closer to the top of that blind hill.
Okay, so kind of where the car is?
Um, no, no. It, it wouldn't be that far. It'd be about another 50 feet or, or, well, 45 feet to be exact.
Okay.
Yeah, to the south, but it is, you know, the perspective there, it, actually, in the field, it, it, it looks worse than that, and, and the traffic moves pretty quickly along, along Dixon Road.
Imagine that.
Yeah, so. So again, we've reviewed it. Staff's in favor of, of the applicant's request. There is someone here if, if they want to speak to it, and then, of course, your recommendation will be on to the Board of Mayor and Alderman for their, their, you know, final disposition of it.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
My name's Eric Nichols.
Can you go over to the microphone, tell us who you are and give us an address?
I already did that. I'm Eric Nichols.
Doesn't count yet.
Now, the folks, the folks, all those people at home watching can't hear you.
Oh, I see. Okay, my name is Eric Nichols. I live at 425 Dixon Road, which is just on, on this side of the, of the proposed entryway to, to the property. And actually, I just want to reinforce the position of the, of the engineering folks. I've looked at that location, and it's at, it gives the maximum, I believe, the maximum site distance in both directions, and is at the, it's at the bottom of the, of the And as has been pointed out, site distance is usually based upon the, the speed that normally is traveled on that road. The speed limit there, there's a sign just on this side that says 30 miles an hour. That is uniformly ignored. They're probably doing closer to 50 miles an hour. In fact, just where that car is up there, there's a sharp turn in the road, and that fence practically needs a, a concrete barrier because of the, because of the speed. But again, to shorten my comments, I think the, the, I agree with the township that, that they should grant the variance. It's the best place to locate that, that driveway along the road. I wouldn't, I wouldn't move it to the 200 feet required.
So that's your driveway that we see?
No, my driveway is, is, is further up, up the hill. Further to the south, I guess.
South.
Yeah, and we have, we have a shorter site distance than they will have. That's right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
I don't, I don't.
They have a motion?
To approve the variance from the distance between driveways requirements. Do I need to expand any more than that?
Second. Do we need a, an amount in there?
It, it would be a 45-foot variance.
Okay.
From, down from, down from 200 to 155 feet.
What the site distances are. The picture here didn't tell me a whole lot.
Well, the actual site distance, I think on the, on the drawing, the site distance to the crest of the hill to the south is being measured at approximately 429 feet. They didn't measure it to the north because it's not as severe and, and was less of a concern.
Okay, we have a motion?
Okay.
And a second. Are we, do we need to go back and do anything or just?
Do we need to, do you need to amend my motion to include the distance, the 45-foot?
If you could.
I move to approve the variance from the distance between driveways requirements for 45 feet from the established provision. Does that work?
Yeah, we can get that.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you for coming.
Noah's not here.
Item number five, discussion and public hearing on a request for the approval of the final plat for Chantilly Acres, Unit 2, parcel 18.01 and 18.02, tax map 162, 1006 McPhee Road, 4.6, 4.46 acres, seven lots, zone R-1, Land Development Solutions applicant.
I believe R-2.
Oh, it was zoned R-2, Land Development Solutions.
Okay, this is a small subdivision that you've all have seen before during the preliminary plating process. They're here for final plat tonight. They've been working on that development. It doesn't involve any new road construction or, or any major infrastructure. They are having to put in a detention basin in the, in the back corner there, what would be the, I guess, southeast corner, and, and also a walking trail extension that, you know, we'll go back and stub in there off of McPhee Road and the, and the walking trail along McPhee Road. All the lots have, have frontage on McPhee, although they are being access restricted to two shared driveway easements, one serving two lots and one serving four lots. The applicant has, has, has made all the changes we asked. In fact, if you look at my recommendations, items one and two were able to be addressed prior to the meeting. They did send over a revised plan. They added a note, just clarifying the access easement for the four-lot shared driveway, which, which are the southern lots. And then they also replaced the note for the subsurface sewage disposal. These lots are going to be on septic systems, so.
So they've already complied with those two?
Yes, ma'am, they have. So we can recommend approval of this, subject to all the required certificates being signed.
Is anybody representing the applicant, do you all have anything you want to say or? Just get it over with, huh? Too close to Christmas.
I make a motion to approve the final plat for Chantilly Acres, Unit 2, with only stipulation being obtaining signatures and all required certificates.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Item number six, discussion on a site plan for Kingston Pike Village, parcel 78.03, 79, 80, and 81, tax map 151, 13110, Kingston Pike, west intersection of South Watt Road and Kingston Pike, 18.59 acres, zone PCD, planned community development, GBS Engineering applicant.
Okay, I think you're all familiar with this project. It's been running through the PCD rezoning process for the past several months. I know you've seen a concept plan on it and, and had to make a recommendation on the rezoning onto the town board. They're now at the phase where they're doing the detailed site planning work. Those were submitted, and there were a large number of comments for the site plan. It is a very large, complicated project, so it's to be expected that, you know, that there would be a lot of issues with the, with the site plan that was turned in. Because of the number of items, we thought it would be best to bring it before you as a workshop project initially, so they can get some feedback from the Planning Commission in terms of some of the design issues. Mark and I had, had talked about it and thought that it, it, it might be best to focus on four or five of, of the major issues that could have some design implications for them, so we tried to summarize that in our comments here. And some of the concerns we have as to whether or not they're meeting the objectives of the, of the PCD zone. So I think you have both the initial comments in your packet that went out for the staff developer conference. Again, they were extensive, and, and we won't go through those unless you want to because, you know, a lot of that is very specific, and, and they'll be working on addressing some of those. But again, we thought that there were some larger design issues and sort of macro-type issues that the developers really needed to hear from the Planning Commission for guidance before they spent a lot of money making adjustments to their site plans if they have to do any, any additional design work. So I can summarize those quickly, and then we can talk about them if, if you like, or if you want to take them one by one, we can do it that way too. But we tried to break it down into, into, into five different large categories. The first involves a, a proposed shared access that they want to use with Little Joe's Pizza, which is right in this area. That is a, a existing driveway cut that Little Joe's Pizza uses, and, and I guess it's served an older house that used to be up on the property there. Obviously, this, this is a much more intensive development, and we put more traffic through, through that access cut. It's approximately 130 feet from the intersection of Kingston Pike and South Watt Road. So both the planning and the engineering staff did have some concerns about that. We put a couple of preferred alternatives in there that, you know, we thought, you know, might address it. One would be closing it and having this developer work with the owners of the Little Joe's site to do some reconfiguration and, you know, try to come to some accommodation in terms of redesign and, and route all the access to South Watt, or all, all that, all that traffic there to South Watt. Another alternative would be to make it right-in, right-out only with a taper and a rather extreme island to, you know, to, you know, keep it right-in, right-out. I know the town engineer has met with them. They are going to have to do a traffic study, and, you know, so some of that will probably be fleshed out as, as part of the traffic study. In, in either case, we think there probably needs to be a little work in this, in this back area here to, you know, to get a little bit more connectivity between the traffic flow on their site and into Little Joe's, but that, of course, would also require them to, you know, work with that property owner on, on resolving some of those issues. The second issue, really, that we looked at was.
Bart, I've got a question.
Sure.
Acclimate me here, where's Little Joe's?
Okay, that's.
Joe's building is right there.
Right here.
Okay. I thought I knew, but I wouldn't, we'll make sure.
Kingston Pike is, is, is down at the, at the, at the base of the drawing, South Watt's over on the left-hand side. I do have a picture here, although it, it may be actually a little confusing because it, it'll, it's, it's reversed with, with Kingston Pike on the top and South Watt on the right-hand side, but Little Joe's is in the top corner there, just so you have a, have a sense of the site. Some of the topography and some of the other issues we're dealing with.
As much as I drive up and down through there, does Little Joe's have an entrance on south, from South Watt now?
Yes, they do. It's, it's right here, and then they also use this, this access that's right there. So that's being dealt with. There will be a traffic study that's done to, you know, to look at all that, and, and again, I think, I think our preferred, our preferred option would be for them to work it out and, you know, somehow integrate those sites and, and bring the traffic through here. I think there's a representative here from, from Little Joe's, and, and you might want to talk to them about that along with the owners. Even if this is a right-in, right-out, I spoke to the town engineers, and he does think that, you know, there probably will need to be a little bit of work back in here, if at all possible, you know, to improve the traffic back in that area and, and bring it through, but again, that's going to require the two property owners to work together on that, and.
Do you have any idea what the site distance is from their entrance from Watt Road?
It's, it, it's a little bit better than this one, but it is substandard, but, you know, they might be able to move it back a little bit, but I'm, I'm not sure they'd be able to get, you know, the full amount that, that is typically required on, on, on that road.
Well, if you go through that back parking lot, isn't that going to take some of their parking spaces?
Well, they, they would have to work together and, and try to integrate the sites better, you know, and, and, and I know that is one of the concerns of, 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 of the owners of, of Little Joe's because their, you know, their parking is constrained, and they don't have good circulation in there, particularly for their delivery trucks, and you might want to speak to them about that. But again, that, that would be an issue that they would have to work, work out amongst themselves and, and, and try to get that resolved.
I'd like to hear from Little Joe's rep, just know whether they're willing to work.
Do you want to go ahead and do that now?
Or, or towards the end, either way?
I've talked to Little Joe's ownership group, or at least rep Nathan. I'm Daniel Smith, 810 Henley Street, Knoxville, Tennessee, 37902. I think from our perspective and Little Joe's perspective, our, our hope would be that we would do option number two, and that we're, seem to be amenable to do an option number two, which is doing a right-in, right-out, and then trying to work together to integrate the site to maybe flesh more traffic on the South Watt and provide some additional, hopefully, maybe a parking space or two on his site to kind of make up for the three that he's going to lose. I think that would be our hope. I don't know if Mark has, has totally looked at it, whether it's feasible to save how much parking, but we think we can work it out, and I think we are, you know, we're both willing to work on this point, and we think this is a good point that, you know, we certainly think we could improve the plan a little bit by, by working with him in, on that specific point. Thank you.
Right-in, right-out's worrying me because I see too many people going left in and I, over curbs and regardless of what we've built, but that's close to that intersection now, and, but the traffic study should help us, especially since the reconfiguration of the intersection, all of that with the Kingston Pike and, and the Loudoun County Shouldn't it help, give us more information there?
I would think so.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Well, the only comment I have is, if at all possible, should not have any access from Kingston Pike, that, that highway is already a mess, and they're, you know, too many left turns across.
I can say that, I mean, there will be this access point, and that, and that was pre-planned when, when the credit union building went in there. So they do have an access point there that, you know, really staff doesn't have an issue with. It's, it's, it's the secondary one there that's, you know, that's close to the intersection there.
That's currently being utilized, isn't it? It's an access point that's.
Yes.
Being utilized right now.
It is, and, and, and in fact, this area right here, you know, that's actually the property line, so it, it, you know, they'll, they'll, if, if they don't already have the shared access agreement set up, they'll, you know, that'll have to be set up because this is actually on the bank property here.
I, I would be interested to know what accident date is there. I'm, I understand the concerns, but I'm loath to shut down, punish Little Joe's. They're not part of this. Their property is separate from this. I have concerns about making it more difficult for them to do their business by, by shutting this down, so I have some concerns with that.
But their entrance on South Watt Road will still be there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would like to see it worked out where you maintain the entrance, you know, the shared access there at, at the credit union, and shut that one off that's so close to South Watt Road. And, but, but to do that, in favor of Little Joe's, you need to integrate that whole parking and that access to South Watt.
We can't close that entrance. There's an easement agreement that predates the town associated with that entrance.
Which entrance are you talking about?
The Little Joe's entrance. It is tied up in an easement agreement that was done before the town of Fairmont became in existence.
Well, I'm not denying that you don't, that, that's true. I'm just saying that's what I'd like to see. Integration, and what, and what can be discussed by the town even with, with Little Joe's, I don't know.
And actually.
I don't know what's been had, any discussions have been had with them.
If I may add a little bit more. If I may add a little bit more. My name's Mark Pylek, GBS Engineering, 1313 Kellamy Road. Sorry, I started with that. This past week, I had a meeting with Daryl Smith, Alan Childers, and Travis Presley was at the meeting, and we sat out there and discussed what the traffic study was supposed to be, what it's going to entail. And we directed Alan Childers to look specifically, as one of his tasks is to look at this entrance. Little Joe's is amenable, and I'm, if I'm wrong, Travis, but you're amenable to a right in, right out, but closing it would kill their business. They need that curb cut for their operation of business. We are willing to work with them, and like I said, we had a meeting. Alan Childers is sitting there. We discussed everything we have to do for the traffic study, the things. We have a proposal from Alan. I believe Tyler is getting ready to sign the proposals so we can get Alan started to evaluate the entire, all the entrances and looking at this and what kind of a right in, right out should be worked out to keep the entrance. And we will work with the traffic study and with Little Joe's to accommodate that.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Well, the only thing that bothers me about right ins and right outs is that where we have them, they're generally abused with people just ignoring the fact-
You can't stop stupidity. I mean, that's a given, okay? But while we were standing, we were actually standing right at that entrance doing the evaluation, and this was at four o'clock in the evening, and you couldn't take a left turn in there because the right, the left turn lane was stacked past all the way back to the entrance to Y-12. So someone trying to take a left turn in there during the worst hours is physically impossible. The cars do not move enough to get a gap right now, so.
Well, and it's personally, the way I'm thinking about it, right in, right out solves, it's an improvement over the current conditions.
Yes, it would. And we're not talking about putting a little tiny island in there. We're talking about tapering something to create an island that would be, the front side would probably be as long as your desk.
And the fact that, it sounds like Little Joe's is amenable to the right in, right out. I'll tell you, I think that we should not be limiting, it sounds like we can't, but we should not be trying to rectify a situation that is not what you guys are dealing with. This is his property.
Yes, we agree.
He's not part of this development.
No, he is not part of this development.
We should not be hurting a current existing business who utilizes this already. This is, doing a right in, right out is improving the situation from where it currently is, and the business owner is agreeable to that, so I'm fine with it.
I don't think we're trying to hurt a business, okay? Let me finish. I look at that, if there's an opportunity to have people come together and have a solution, you try to see through it. If you see there are constraints to that, then you see what you can do to compromise to do that. Simple. I don't sit here and pound on the table saying, "I want that closed." You know, I want to, I just, you know, I don't know what's been discussed. I'm trying to explore that, so I have a full understanding of where we are on this. And if we could hit a home run, fine. If it's a single, then fine.
I don't think we're going to get a home run yet.
I can tell you, their business is legendary, I suppose.
The best thing in town.
They're going, people are going to find a way to get there even if they have to.
Ed, we're not going to hit a home run on this deal based on what Mark said already, you know, but I agree with Louise, we're making an improvement, or that right in, right out would be definite improvement to the current.
I think it would be a huge improvement. And like, I understand your concerns, and like I said earlier, you can't stop stupidity. Someone's going to try, they're going to do it no matter what. We could put up an eight-foot wall and they still try, you know. You can't stop stupidity. But, that being said, we will work with the traffic engineer, with Alan Childers, is tasked to evaluate that intersection as to what it would take to do a safe right in, right out, and work with Little Joe's Pizzas to maintain something that works for them. And also, we want it to be a secondary egress point, not a primary entry point into our development.
But I think there's a second part to that, too. And I think that's, you know, what I'm hearing, too, is if there's a win-win relative integrating the parking better to where it flowed to that right in and right out.
Yes.
You know, we want to take advantage of that.
And yes.
We want to do anything that will also benefit you out of this.
I would agree, yeah.
And I think we can work with them and create something that doesn't hurt their operations, get them a little bit more parking, and create a safer means, a secondary means of entry into their development. It won't be a primary, it will be a secondary.
That was going to be my point, and the fact that we're not just talking about this entrance in Little Joe's, we're talking about it for the whole development. So that's going to put a lot more traffic than what is going through Little Joe's.
I understand that, yes. And like I said, by making it right in and right out, which all along, I've always looked at this as more of a secondary, like someone coming eastbound from Loudoun County, and they miss the Y-12 entrance, they go, "Oh, gee, look," and now they'll have a way to get in. It won't be a primary, it'll be a secondary. We want to create a secondary point of entry.
So let's just hope they don't throw on their brakes and cause the cars behind them to start.
I agree, I agree. Well, that's where we do the tapers and work with the traffic engineers to create a safe situation.
Anybody else have questions or comments on that one? And do you have something you want to say?
I think it's progress.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay. So moving on to the second main issue that we were looking to have a discussion about tonight was the lack of vehicular and pedestrian connectivity to some of the abutting properties. Specifically, there were no provisions made to the properties to the west in Loudoun County, so along here. We think that there probably needs to be a little bit better connectivity between the site and Little Joe's, and that sounds like it'll probably be resolved as they're working on their, on any reconfigurations of parking and activity in this area, you know. But as it was, the only, you know, real way to move, you know, from these shops over here to Little Joe's would be to, you know, walk through their parking lot and behind their building. And then staff also had some concern about this proposed connection point back here and its utility, and the fact that it's on some very steep topography and would probably just tear up that hillside some more. So whether or not that's, you know, advisable back there and whether that one would be needed. So, you know, the ordinance does require connectivity, and the question is, is whether or not the planning commission feels, you know, what aspects of this are needed, you know, whether vehicular connectivity is needed into Loudoun County and to the west, or whether simple pedestrian connectivity points would be. It's sort of similar to what you did at the other end of town with the O'Reilly's site and the fact that you abutted Knox County there. If I could, just, let's wipe that for a minute and then just move along. I think you can see, again, this is a flipped image, but this area over here is the Loudoun County area. So, you know, we're talking about that area. This is Snyder Road, and here's the credit union, and here's Little Joe's. And then this site, the way they subdivided, I'm just guessing the line, but it probably runs about through there, you know. So you're talking about, you know, the development being up in here, and then whether or not there needs to be some sort of connectivity into here, into Loudoun County in any way.
Bart, do you have a grading plan?
We do, yep.
Could you pull that up, please?
Sure.
Before you do that, for anybody who may not know, but that's a nursery in the front and a fireworks store. And then you've got many storage next up the hill.
Yes.
And then a neighborhood or houses, I don't-
Residential lots.
And they're all connected directly to the road that goes down through there.
That is correct.
There's no one entrance to all those places.
But if you pull up the grading plan real quick.
I've got to clear this first, hang on a minute.
I understand, I understand. Is part of the plan, our PCD concept plan, we agreed to create an easement between, in the area behind the loading dock of the grocery store over to the Loudoun County line. But if you look, there is a small gap between retaining walls that is basically just, well, just above where it says grocery. If you go straight across to the Loudoun County line, there is an air gap in there of the retaining walls that we could put an easement in, and we'll be more than happy to put an easement for connectivity there.
Although whether or not that would be, you know, functional and usable would be something the planning commission would have to consider.
I understand. But if you go north of that, there's a retaining wall that gets up to 10 feet. If you go south of that, it goes to a retaining wall. By the time you get behind the grocery, it turns and goes around the corner there by the apartment, between the apartment and the loading dock, it gets 22 feet tall.
Yeah. But of course, that's-
We're challenged to get between, by grade, to get between the two lots.
But in some respects, you're creating that grade, and you're creating those grading issues and retaining walls based on what you want to put on the property. So, you know, again, there has to be a balance there between design and what the planning commission wants.
And we talked about this during the concept plan for this, to get the zoning. And we agree to put an easement in between the two retaining walls for connectivity.
And it's behind the grocery store?
It would be behind the grocery store, going into the mini-storage property, which is a little bit north of where we talked initially, which was basically the drive that goes right to the south of, which the top of the page is the south, towards, just above the loading dock for the grocery stores, where we initially talked about doing it. But now that we have an actual grading plan, and I've got the grocery store as high as I can physically get so we can minimize our retaining walls, and that's just the way it works out. I mean, you only can go up certain grades and be able to get semis into and out of a facility, and we're pushing the limits on that to get things up to minimize. We don't want to put retaining walls in if we don't have to. But we would be more than happy to provide an easement between the retaining walls.
So would that be for-
For future connectivity.
For vehicular or just-
Yes, for vehicular activity, for connectivity.
What the distance of that easement?
Of the easement, it would be a 30-foot easement. That way you could get a two-lane connectivity, 26 feet, meaning your ordinance.
We had that shown when we were looking at it. I don't know what's in this package, though.
I think from the staff's position, we'd want to, you know, see that and also have the planning commission see that, both, you know, in three dimensions for, you know, so you could see how that would work and whether or not that would be usable and meet the intent of what you're trying to achieve in the town and based on the town's regulations and various requirements. And, you know, I understand that it's a difficult site to work with, but at the same time, you're, you know, you're putting this development on it, and you are creating some of those grade issues and some of those retaining wall issues based on, you know, what you're trying to achieve on the site. And so, you know, there does need to be a balance, I think, between, you know, what the requirements are and the goals the town has for development, particularly in the PCD zone, and what you're trying to achieve with the development.
If I could make a couple of comments about that, there were, some of the thrust of the staff's comments seemed to be suggesting that we go back and make substantial changes to this development plan for some of those reasons, for the feeling that there's too much going on, et cetera. And I think the position that we have is that this is not the best development plan for the developer. It's not the perfect development plan for the Town of Farragut, but it is the best development plan that we have for this site, for us to be able to finance it, to move forward and get the retail. We have a whole lot, the community, the developer, the tenants. This is what we spent over three months talking about, and this is the plan that the mayor and Board of Alderman voted to pass, and also the one that the planning commission voted to pass. And this plan, it cited certain language in the PC district that said that buildings could be moved, that zoning conditions could be changed for uses, setbacks, et cetera. But if you look at the language of the PCD zoning, it says, "As part of the approval of the PCD zoning for the development plan that's being implemented, that gets implemented in PCD zoning." This development plan is the zoning for our property, and that's what we all agreed to. And so what we're trying to do is take the development plan and get a civil site plan that is consistent with that development plan, and that's what we're trying to do. But I think what we're really concerned about is if we go back and start second-guessing things and changing things and saying, "We need to go back and create more open spaces and more this and that." We're renegotiating the whole thing that we all kind of got together and came up with the best plan for the site. And, you know, we have started to move forward on architectural, on design, on financing, and, you know, we're not going to develop this plan for another two years if we negotiate these big, broad things. I think we need to be very tailored and specific about how we can make this plan consistent with the concept plan. And if you look at the zone, there's nowhere in that PCD district that allows for unilateral changing and saying that this has to be different. It's about, does this plan, this concept plan, is it being consistently adhered to by what we put together? And additionally, you know, there, this is a, if you, there's an act that was passed in 2014 that grants a vested right in preliminary development plans just like this. And now, from our perspective, if there's things that we can make better that are specific like this, that affect important things like traffic flow, et cetera, we absolutely want to look at that and make the plan as best as we possibly can. We're going to keep working. But we also have constraints, time and financing, that, you know, we have a lot of pressure to keep the ball moving forward. And so we, you know, we just really want to emphasize that our position is that we agreed to this development plan, we bought all this property, we have gone forward to try to implement the plan, and we can't rehash it all now. It's just not fair, and it's not going to be productive for us to get this plan done.
Yeah. And the town's position is that the concept plan was part of the rezoning application, and it was a concept plan. It did not require the same level of analysis and study, and it was really for the purposes of moving forward with the rezoning to PCD. And the language in the ordinance, you know, does point out that there can be changes throughout the process, or at least that's our take on it. We have discussed it with the town attorney. It feels like, you know, the concept plan was related to the rezoning, and now we're at the site planning process. And even as Mark said, you know, a lot of the grading information and a lot of this, you know, more specific information was not available at the point of concept. And so, you know, now, you know, there are issues with, you know, connectivity and other aspects of the plan that, you know, because now we're at the detailed site planning process, and we are getting that better information, yes, we are seeing additional issues, you know, with the plan. And that's part of the overall process of going from concept for rezoning purposes to site planning for development purposes.
And I would really emphasize, I know that people looked at the PCD zoning, the language cited that it's as part of the approval process of PCD zoning. The PCD zoning has been approved. The town could make conditions on something like, for example, that you can't have a certain use that you otherwise would have been able to have under C1 zoning. The zoning code on PCD says you can have any use that's under PCD zoning unless the town, as part of the approval process, conditions it differently and puts it on the development plan. And the same is true of, and that's right, the language that follows right after that is, "As part of the approval of the plan." And this is a plan that we got together and proved, and 100% the applicant is committed to work through these issues of connectivity, grading, all these, kind of to make it fit the con- these, kind of to make it, make it fit the cons, the, the consistent theme of the, and scheme of the development plan. But we can't change building locations and, and, and get rid of, we've already, we've already agreed to 35% open space, which is 5% more. We've given up a whole lot by getting this PCD zoning, and I don't see anywhere in the zoning code that says that we can just start, just throwing out the plan because we don't like it and want to go rehash everything. It's just, it, we feel a lot of, you know, we don't, we certainly want to get to the best plan for the community going forward and for us, but we are very apprehensive about re, regoing back and creating a whole new plan. That's something that we, we just don't feel we can do. This is, if I recall, I think we said, we agreed, we talked about all these retaining wall issues during the original discussions, and we said, "This is the plan that we can do, and we can't do anything more, otherwise we need to keep it C1," and we all agreed to move forward under this plan. So I, I think substantial, huge wholesale changes to the site plan is going to be something that we can't do.
But Dave, oh, excuse me.
I guess I thought through the, you know, the original process, that we went through a considerable discussion of every one of these points practically. In fact, I thought the only one really that we haven't, hadn't really gotten to the, you know, say the bottom of, so to speak, was the Little Joe's at that area. And I was quite surprised to see this, well, lengthy comments at this point, because some of this, we just, we went through, we talked about the easement, we talked about the slopes, we talked about the, and we saw modifications, we saw multiple plans coming back to us, incorporating as best they could some of the comments, in good faith, I thought. I didn't, you know, I thought that, you know, Mark made his comments and we heard it and whatever. I don't know what was said in the developer sessions, but, and what have you, but I think we can even work through this the best we can, but I guess I was a little bit surprised that we had such, you know, lengthy comments at this point in time, because we saw a lot of effort put into multiple plans and multiple discussions with us through multiple sessions.
Good, David.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. David Smoke, Town Administrator. I, we obviously want to work with the applicant as, as much as the planning commission does and trying to figure out the best, best way to make this project work. I think what Bart has mentioned, and, and we would, would certainly, I would agree with what he has said, is that the details that we, we get at this development site, site development process now are, are much greater than they were at the concept plan phase. And certainly, we knew there were slopes, we knew there were different things we're going to have to deal with, but I think what the planning commission needs to understand is that that was not an approval of a site development per what we believe is the vested rights. And so, so now is your chance to, to go through that process, and certainly you don't want to just change everything in the plan. I think, I don't think that's what we're asking them to do. But what we are saying is when you see the individual detail of, of retaining walls here and there and how that's all fitting, you have to decide whether that's something that you are okay with, or if that's something you want to try to modify. So I think, again, Bart's comments are, are certainly one I would, I would support in, in the, in the sense that we do have that greater detail, and the planning commission does have a latitude to make some decisions based on what you feel is best for the site plan for the project.
I look at the site plan being a continuum of the development of the concept plan.
And it should be.
Not a deviation from it unless there, you know, some, you know, sinkhole or something, one note, some, there's got to be some, you know, major item that comes up to the source. It needs to be a natural process from concept to site plan, and maintaining that discussions and the compromises and discussions that come out of that. And so, yeah, there's going to be more detail because you're going to have more survey information, you're going to have more cut, fill, idea, you're going to have, but generally, the buildings are where they're going to be, the slopes are still where they're at, we know there's going to be, we walk the topography, you see what it's going to be, you get an idea of what it's going to take engineering-wise to make that come out of the ground. So I, I just, I'm a little concerned at, at the degree of some of the comments at this point in time. And it sounds like we, you know, when we start talking about site and, you know, "Well, it says this and our legals look at that," and we've kind of gotten to an impasse as opposed to we've working through this to get from a concept plan to a site plan and move seamlessly to a, the best alternative we have for this site.
And our job is just to tell you the concerns that we have. Obviously, y'all are the ones that vote and decide on what you think's best for the project. So that's really what staff's here to do, is to give you our best professional opinion about what we see on the ground, and based on the, the more detailed design work that we have now going forward. So that's all we're here to do, is talk through those issues and decide what y'all think is best for the community.
Yeah, which we deeply appreciate.
Yep, thanks.
Okay, I have some concerns. The first thing I think about when we're talking about this is, to me, the most important aspect of this is the residential aspect of this. We want people to move here. We want people to want to live here. And my, my, I have concerns about 30-foot retaining wall. And how is, is the open space behind it, behind there that, you know, it's pretty open space, but is it unusable? Was it unusable before? Are we rendering it unusable with a 30-foot retaining wall? Is someone living in these apartments are going to be looking at a 30-foot retaining wall? I, I, I have a struggle with the type of apartments we're trying to have here, and who's going to want to move into an apartment with, that's their view? We're trying to have a place of, of activity and of energy, and I'm sure that's what you all want. I understand that this is a compromised location, but it's, it's frustrating to, to think that this is what we might end up with, and I think the residential aspect is the part that we really need to make sure that we have connectivity to the rest of it, that there's, they're able to get around and do things and have open space to those amenities.
Louise, if I may, try to answer your question. Yes, the, the only part of the wall that is approximately 30 feet is directly south of that last unit that's running parallel with the Loudoun County line, closest to the top of the page. From there, it starts going down-
South or west?
It'd be, it'd be southwest.
In here, Mark?
Yes, that corner right there is where it's 30-foot tall. And that's because I've been directed by Mr. Shipley that because this is a tree-covered lot, we can't grade outside of, in the transition zone. However, I am going to, this next week, I'm going to go walk that area. And if I take pictures and there is nothing but large trees and no scrub or vegetation, and now's a good time to do it because there's no leaves on the trees. Like I said, I was out there at the site this, this afternoon and looking up there, and I was like, "Boy, it looks pretty clear, you can see a lot of tall trees, but you don't see a lot of undergrowth up in that area." Well, if we can grade, legally grade in that area, I would like to lower, I don't want to build a 30-foot tall retaining wall there. And it's, it's in a transition zone, I'm going to look at it as a buffer zone, so you can't grade anything steeper in a four-to-one slope. If I come down through there, I think I can take about three to six feet off the top of that wall right there, if there is no undergrowth or nothing there that says that we can't grade that area. But again, I haven't walked that area, I personally have not walked that area to really look at it and make sure that that is an area we can grade. I assume the worst, and that's what we have. And I actually, if you notice, the contours of the drive coming around the backside of those units run along the top of the page, that's a six-and-a-half percent slope going up through there, which is a lot steeper than you usually have in an apartment complex, but that's because I'm trying to minimize the height of the retaining walls and minimize the impact that we have into the transition zone. I can't, I le, I mean, I can go steeper, but it would be creating a hardship on the residents. It's not, it's not ideal as it is right now. If we did it at 5%, that wall would be closer to 40-foot tall.
Well, lowering that retaining wall by, what, three to six feet, as you mentioned, I think-
It makes a difference.
It makes some difference, but it's still, I don't think would resolve Louise's concern.
And I understand her concern, but you also got to look at it from the standpoint-
I don't know that you can resolve it.
No, we, we're going to have to have a retaining wall there. We, we, we have no choice in the matter. And we talked about that during the concept stage, that there would be a retaining wall in there. You all asked me how tall it would be. At that time, I couldn't tell you because I hadn't done a grading plan. Now I have a grading plan.
Well, it seems if there has to be a retaining wall there, then your efforts to minimize it would be most helpful.
Right, and that's what I want to do. And, and it does two things. One's, like you said, it minimizes the impact. Two, it saves money for the developer, because every foot of retaining wall adds square footage, we add square footage, you add cost.
I'm sure a little grading is cheaper than building the retaining wall.
A lot, a lot, a little bit of grading, every foot you take off that saves a lot of money real quick. And, and, and I agree, Louise, it's not going to be the prettiest thing.
I'm surprised that you don't already know, though, that-
But at the same time, Louise, what we're talking about doing, I've been talking with Geo Services, who's going to be doing the retaining wall design, and what we're looking there is the ready rock wall, kind of like we were talking about at, at the overlook, and doing, and I haven't had a chance to talk to these gentlemen here, but there is multiple patterns that you can pick for the, for the blocks. There's one that actually looks like it's, how do I put it, like a stack, almost like an oversized stacked stone look to it, that's not concrete bay gray, that is at no additional cost than the concrete gray. So, I mean, we can, we'll work with that to minimize the, the, how you want to put it, I hate to say it, eyesore, but to minimize the look of it as much as we can.
I, I'm curious as to why you don't already know whether you can do grading there.
Oh, we can, we can do ready rock.
No, I'm grading, additional grade.
Well, because I haven't walked the property, personally walked the property in that area to, because Mark is saying, Mark Shipley has told me that it's, because it's all tree-covered, we can't grade that area. Well, that is unless I go up there and physically walk and take pictures and prove that it's not, it's tree-covered, but it's by large trees, none, there's no undergrowth, as long as we're staying outside the drip line of the trees, we can grade that area. But again, I have not, in that area, do you have the tree preservation plan?
I don't.
Okay, well, if you, I do, from memory, if I remember correctly, in that transition zone, along that area, there's like four trees that meets the tree preservation requirements. That whole strip there, there's four trees. So if I walk it and find out and take pictures and figure out that I can grade it, I will grade it, legally grade it, I will grade it and lower the height of the retaining wall to the best of my ability. And make it worse, so when we do the landscape plan that will come with this, that has to be planted to a 35-foot buffer as required by the PCD zone, we will incorporate the trees that we don't take out and put in the correct number of trees that is required by, by, by the zoning ordinance. And we can also soften it up, Louise, by putting, planting some shrubs and stuff along there to soften the look of the trees, of the retaining wall on the inside, too. And I, it's not ideal, no, but at the same time, in order to make the project work, we got to, like you said, there's compromises that are going to have to be incurred. It's just like the unit in, that's closest to the gas station, one of Mark's comments at the staff development meeting was, "I wouldn't want to live where I'm looking out at a gas station." Well, I, he doesn't have to. He lives in a nice house over by where I live, so.
Well, my comment was going to be, I, I don't want to overlook a grocery store either, now there may be people who do, but again-
Yeah, well, see, and again, along that, that same line is that common space to, to the right of that apartment building that we're talking about, yeah, there's a retaining wall in the back, which we talked about when we were creating, at the planning commissions for the PCD, and I said, "There would be a retaining wall there." And we can plant it and plant some shrubs and stuff in there, so it softens the look of it, but we're creating a big, flat area that could be used for anything.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Yes, sir.
Obviously, you have the retaining wall, and this will be my ignorance in how you build things. Why do you not bring the retaining wall down and elevate the, the common space so that it's, can be utilized more easily by, and accessed more easily by the residents of the apartment complex?
Well, we could do that, but then all you'll see is a retaining wall down on the, on the grocery side.
I, I don't, as a resident of the apartments, would you rather have the, would you rather walk down steps and have to use it?
But at the same, if, if I may, if I may, at the same time, I have done a cut and balance on this, and right now, that site balances, believe it or not. It, we don't have to haul in, we don't have to haul any dirt in, because what we're cutting fills the areas. In the area of that right there, we're cutting dirt out that we need other places on the site.
Enough to fill that.
We, we would have to haul dirt in to raise it up. It would cost us money to do that. That's why we have the set of steps right by the gazebo there, to the, to the left of the gazebo, is, there's a set of steps that will come down from above, that the residents can walk down a set of steps and come into that area.
I'm just not entirely sure that people will utilize that as, as much as if it was brought up to. I, I understand what you're, I'm, I'm in dream world.
I understand.
I'm not talking numbers right now, I'm talking, in a, in a way of having an asset to that, the community there by having a, a common space that, that is up on their level. I'm trying to look at this from a, purely from a residential amenities aspect because, you know, it's, it's a tight fit.
And, and that was one of the, you know, staff's comments on, on number four there, was whether or not, you know, the open space really meets the objectives of the PCD, particularly now that we have the more detailed grading information, because although you may have discussed the retaining walls, you know, whether or not the heights were, you know, were fully known at the time, I don't know, I, I wasn't here for those discussions. But, you know, really, you have some open space here that, as Louise has pointed out, is, is really isolated from the residential area. The other open space is really just the walking trail around the detention basin, which, and actually, the flat area up, up at the top, I think, has probably been reduced from the original concept plan. I think, I think it was, it was, so, you know, there's even less there, and, and when you look at the grading, even a lot of the green space between the buildings is, is really very steep and not, and not particularly usable. So, you know, any improvements that you could make in terms of, you know, reworking this area and, and from the residential standpoint, to get more, more usable open space, more functional open space, things that are, are closer to the objectives that are spelled out in the, in the language of the PCD ordinance, in those regards, would, you know, would probably, you know, help the project. And, and again, I think, I think the planning commission at this point is, is looking at making something that's going to be an asset for the community long-term.
Question on the apartments, do you have to put them in a row like that? Can you?
If we rearrange it, we have to redesign the whole site. And, and if you remember correctly, when we brought the first plan to you-
I'll talk about all this.
We've, we've talked about this already. We, we just can't rotate the buildings.
Square one, almost.
Yeah.
Some of these comments, that's what disturbs me, is that we, you know, Bart, go and show me, I want you to point out that, that circulation problem to the, to the-
To the property to the south?
To the common area. Show me what you think the issue is, by pointing it out on blue ink or whatever on it. Because you're going to come by the, the pool and clubhouse area, right, in that general area.
Yeah.
You're going to come down to the cul, the traffic circle, you're going to take a sidewalk around to it, and you're going to walk to a sidewalk to it. Am I not correct?
One of our comments on the, on the internal circulation is, is we didn't feel that, you know, based on the, on the new grading plan and, and some of the changes they've made from their concept, that there was very good connectivity between this building here, or, or this row of buildings, and getting over to the other things without having to just walk through the parking lots, as opposed to on sidewalks. I think on, on the original concept, there was a drive down through here, or something to that effect.
And I, and if you remember correctly, I, there was a drive there, and I said, "I have, I have a hard time believing we're going to be able to make that work because of the grades," and that would be the one thing that we would take out of the concept plan. Well, now that we've got a grading plan, where that drive is, the retaining wall right there is approximately 18 feet tall.
Right, which in turn creates a little bit of a connectivity problem. So that's, that was one of the areas that we thought, you know, we could use some improvements. There were a couple of other areas. We were also a little concerned on, on those issues about sort of ADA compliance, particularly when you're moving along this path down here and then crossing, I think, down across here in this steep area.
There will be, there will be an ADA problem right there, because there's, have to require a set of steps. But if they walk to the east, to the west, they can walk around- But if they walk to the east, to the west, they can walk around the end and meet ADA completely fine.
And again, we're trying to get good, convenient connectivity in the site. And these were just things that we noticed now that we have the grading plan and, and we can see all that of, of areas that might, you know, be a consideration for improvement.
Okay.
18 feet is two flights. Is that two flights upstairs?
Yeah, the maximum number, of change in elevation without putting a landing is 11 feet. So yes, it would be two flights.
That is, that is, one of my concerns was that, that access that was, and I understand that, but...
We were looking at it as a vehicular access, not a pedestrian access.
Well, that's what I'm wondering is yet, this one, if we could have pedestrian access...
Could we, yeah, we could actually do a set of steps that follows the retaining wall. If you would, kind of like what we were talking about going to the south. We could put in a set of steps by those apartments that come down to the open space area. We could create that. Like you said, it would require a landing midway, 18 feet. You have to have a landing, by code, you have to. But we could incorporate that. That'd be something I believe we could talk to and work through.
With regard to the grocery store, the loading dock, that has to be on that side of the building?
Well, on that side, it's not visible from Kingston Pike.
Well, I, I'm not sure that it's, this is my concern. Loader, they come in late at night, beep, beep, beep. That's what you're gonna hear. You may not hear it from the other side. I would rather compromise looking at a...
If we, oh, wait.
If we elevate the residential as the most important aspect of this. And to me, that's really...
If we flip it over, the grocery store doesn't fit.
Okay. Why is that?
Because now it's behind the common space.
I see what you're saying. Where are the garbage?
It's actually got a compactor. And it's in the, in the, in the area directly adjacent to the loading, the ramp, the dock. Which is another reason why we wanted it up there, because we can put landscaping across the green space area, the open space, to shield it from visibility from South Lot Road.
Is anybody else having questions or comments about that particular aspect?
I'd like to make one comment about the residential component. In particular, the retaining wall in the back right corner. That's, if we could get it to 24 feet, that would be really a win, I think. But in the big scheme of things, there's six, six or so units that are gonna be facing that corner retaining wall. That's, that's at that large point that tapers off. There are six people out there that don't care about that retaining wall. And I, and in this whole process, over the next couple of weeks and months, I would encourage you guys to go take a look at a few sites that have dealt with these sort of challenges. One of them, I was at today, at Paper Mill, the development with the bistro by the track. It's done in a, in a very tapered way like this. And there are some significant ready walk retaining walls that look good. And, and are done in a really well, in a really good way. That it's, it's not, it's not terrible in terms of aesthetics. And we're talking about six units that, there's people that will, I wouldn't think twice about it personally. So, but there are people that would care. And obviously, we'd like to minimize the extent at which buildings are next to large 25-foot retaining walls. But we knew there was gonna be something like a 20-foot. I think that it was mentioned it was gonna be 20 feet at the, the planning commission discussions that we had about it. We knew it was gonna be tall. At 30 feet, it's, it is tall. Hopefully, we're really hopeful that we could potentially grade in that one area there and bring it down to a little bit more manageable height. But, you know, it's, it's not unlike the, the bank site that Noah has that deals with very similar difficulties in retaining walls. It's got challenges, but it's, it's still a really solid plan. And I, but I agree with all these changes, all these discussion points regarding, I think we can take a look at the open space of, do we want that open space to be more beneficial to the residential community? The flip side from the, the open space, you know, from, from our kind of thought process in designing it, we were thinking that, you know, that's a community-wide thing. So if we isolate it just for the residential, it is gonna benefit the residential community quite a bit, but it may take away from the community's use of that area, too. And that's the, the flip side of, 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 I think that kind of, that and among other things kind of drove what we did with that open space configuration with the, with the grading.
But making it more accessible to the residential area would be a plus, I think.
We're gonna definitely look at it. I think we can look at it. It certainly would make the residential, it would be an amenity to the residential, the less of an amenity to, you know, the public that are going to the grocery store and would see that open space and might go and engage that open space from the public side of things. So it's, it's, that's the challenge with it.
I would say from my perspective, if, from a residential aspect, I think people that are going to the grocery store will, will not necessarily be inclined, unless you are, they have intentional programming in that area, they won't necessarily be inclined to use that. More people that are gonna come and hang out will be, if there's, the retail shops fill up the way you guys want to, and possibly the walking around. It's hard to look from a plan view and, and get an idea of what's, what's, what it's gonna look like or how it's gonna be used. It looks like the, I don't know how big of, how many feet that is between the lower parking lot and the grocery parking lot. Those steps could be daunting for somebody. I, you know, I know that that's part of the...
Yeah. Actually, if you remember correctly, I was saying that's where I'd like to put a bioswale. And I was actually very disappointed when I got the grading and can't put a bioswale there.
Well, how many feet is that?
It's, it's about eight feet, differential.
So it's a...
Between the two areas, it's about eight feet. But, you know, one of our requirements also is to do low-impact development with some of this. And if y'all remember, I brought 12640 in front of you, and we got a low-impact with, with Pacoa pavers and underground detention. That's exactly what I'm planning to do with those last spaces along the, between the grocery store and the retail, is put that in there so that that area is taken care of with a low-impact design, detention, and then routed into the pipe that we're bypassing the water that's coming from the nursery and Ace Hardware. So we create detention. That takes some of the detention load off of this big storm pond. If I can decrease the size of that storm pond, I'm gonna decrease the size of that storm pond. Because I think it, I agree with y'all. It needs to be softened up a little bit. But I'm not completely done with all the calculations, so I can't tell you if it's too big, too small, what. But I know we have to put some low-impact design in, so we can, I'll see what I can do to minimize the impact of that and see if I can decrease the size of that storm pond in the other open space.
Lisa, that's the way I'm reading it.
Is that, I'm sorry, I'm looking at this, that leaves, well, I guess there's two different ones. Those are pipes, those are, that lead to the drainage. What are those?
Okay, which, whereabouts are we talking about? And I hate to walk, I'd love to walk over and...
Please, please, because I don't know what this is. What is, what is this?
Hit it up so everybody can see what he's talking about.
This is the storm plate collection system for the back of the grocery store. And goes into the storm pond.
Okay.
These spaces right through here is where I want to do the same thing as we did 12640, which is a very nice low-impact, and it'll create all the detention for this. And I'm also looking at maybe doing the same thing in this area right here to lessen the impact here. Unfortunately, all of this area, there's really no, in the apartment part, there's really no area to do a low-impact.
Hey, Mark?
Yes, ma'am?
Would you please?
Are, are you talking about the drainage pipes on the north or south side?
That's what I'm, sure.
And you could talk into the microphone here.
Yes, and I will. What I was showing Louise is, is this, you know, draw blue? Okay. This area, whoops, I'm, this area right here is when I'm proposing to do something very similar to what we did at 12640, which is permeable pavers dropping down into an underground detention facility. And we'll route that water into this pipe that comes through here, which is a bypass pipe. But we'll detain, we'll provide the water quality, water detention, everything, all low-impact for the residential, I mean, for the retail. This area right here is another area where I'm looking to do a similar type thing so that I can lower, but unfortunately...
The pavers, you know?
Yeah, with the pavers and underground detention. Unfortunately, in regards to the entire apartment complex or the residential aspect of it, there's no real spot where we can take advantage of such a situation. These two areas right here would be more than, probably closer to almost 50% of the site being, going through a low-impact. And we're only required to have to do, I think it's 15% or 20%. But that also decrease, hopefully, it allows us to decrease this storm pond because the amount of impervious area associated with the apartments is less than, is, it doesn't, there's more green space in that area than there is associated with the retail areas.
So if you decrease that detention pond then, are you gonna increase the open space there?
Yes. Well, I'll increase the flat area if I can, yes.
Won't have as much slope in there.
Yeah, I won't have to have it, maybe not have to have it be as deep, not as big. And therefore, the only reason, one of the other things that happen is, can you clear that for a second?
Sure.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, put it back on, okay? The reason the storm pond is, looks like it shifted a little bit closer this way is because right through here, going this way, is an existing sanitary sewer system, sewer line. And we cannot cover, by your code and by First Utilities' requirements, we cannot put our fill over the top of that sanitary sewer line other than what we're doing with, with the pavement areas. But for a detention facility, they don't want anything near it because they don't want infiltration hitting their sewer system. And I will be working with First Utility, like I did at the overlook at Campbell Station, to make sure we have everything, all our i's dotted and t's crossed with First Utility, and make sure they sign off on the plans before we get approved. Does that help you, Louise?
Yes, that helped.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Bart.
Need to move on to the next item.
Honestly, I, I think, I think you jumped ahead and, and pretty much covered it because item four was, you know, really dealing with the functional open space. And I, I think that's already been discussed. And, and item five was just dealing with the, you know, the environmentally sensitive areas in the hillside and, and the amount of grading being done. But, you know, I, I think you've been talking about that as well and the amount of retaining wall that's, that's going in.
Well, it seems to me that you've had a lot of obstacles to try to consider here in this development. And I think, at least from my perspective, what we'd like you to do from this point is to just try to refine a bit of your ideas to make it more amenable to use by the residential section and lower that retaining wall as much as you can by grading if possible.
That's dependent on what's out there for tree cover and ground cover in that area. If it is what I think...
It seems to me you understand all of the discussions that we've had here, points we've made.
Yes, yes.
I think you just need to keep truckin'.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
There was one other minor issue, and we were all, I'm also wondering if you could add a little additional landscaping at the front of the grocery. But it, it, it didn't appear on the plan, and we just, you know, wanted to bring that up as well.
I understand, and we will, our hands are kind of tied by the grocery because they use that for storage of buggies, whatever, and, and outdoor sales and that they may use at some point that they have to get permission from the town to do. But we will try and incorporate some landscaping in front of the grocery store, in the area directly adjacent to the front of the grocery store. I understand the town's requirement. However, the green space around the sides and the rear is more than the required landscaping as required by code. And we will landscape that accordingly.
This store is going to store carts in front of them?
Sometimes they have, some grocery stores do have outdoor storage of buggies. I don't think this one does, but I mean, I'm just talking, I don't know which grocery store it is, so I don't know what the particular way of doing things is. But I do know that this is what they provided to us, and they needed it to be concrete in this area. Why? I couldn't tell you, but that's what they provided to me. But we will work with you, we'll try and talk them into putting some of it into something that could be planted, if at all possible.
Seems like it improved their, the aesthetics of that as well, hiding their buggies and whatnot.
I understand, but, you know, it's not, it's, I'm not the architect. I'm just a stupid civil engineer that's working on this.
Well, you just got another point to add to your to-do list.
Some people do, some people don't. Personally, I think grocery carts are ugly. I don't care, you can, you can't make them pretty, in my opinion.
No.
I got a question.
Yes.
What size apartments are gonna be up there?
That will have to leave to them.
That's why you can't put steps in there. It'd be nice if you could access right here. Come on, it's right here, you know, it's just...
Average is about 950 square foot per unit, but that breaks out to roughly 775, 800 for one bedrooms typically is kind of the average. And then maybe 11, 1200 or so for, for the two bedrooms and the 13. The three bedrooms are maybe 1300 square feet or so.
But that's what I thought by raising that, that you might be able to use it for the residential.
The mix is, is, is fairly 50/50 between one bedrooms and the larger...
Daddy go there and play with the kids while I go to the grocery store.
Two and three. I think it's straight up 50/50 in that.
I guess what, getting that, really getting that in my mind is how many occupants are gonna, you know, apartments are gonna have, and it's how many people are gonna be up there.
So if we have, probably on average, for, for a rule of thumb, tends to be for two bedrooms, you're, you're looking at, you know, one and a half, two people. And for the one bedrooms, you're looking at 1.2. And then it averages all out to a little bit under one and a half times the amount of units-ish. So I'd say 300-ish, 320 or so, maybe a little bit more because it's a little heavier, two bedroom.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Do you all have any more comments or questions for us?
Actually, actually, this is probably a comment for Bart. Bart, I know we're gonna workshop this again next month. When do I need to turn what in?
It'll just be normal deadlines.
Well, the normal deadline for next month is this past Monday.
Yeah, so it'll be February then, I guess.
I don't know. No, please, please, can we do something different than that? Because we didn't do that when we were doing, going through rezoning. Can we, can I get with Mark and sort that out, please?
Yeah.
Is that all right? Y'all, I would like to bring this back in front of you next month. And then, for, for workshop. And then my proposed deadline would be, we workshopped it today, we'll workshop it next month. And hopefully, by the time we come back for our review in February, we can go for a vote, so, you know, to minimize the subjectives, if that's all right with y'all.
Well, I have a question then.
Yes.
Do you, is there any question in your mind as to the points that we've made here and the direction you need to go for the next workshop?
No, I, I know we're... No, I, I, I know we're, I know the improvements that we need to incorporate to start addressing some of your concerns and some of it is legwork that I've got to do and some of it is the traffic study, i.e. regards to the entrance onto Little Joe, between us and Little Joe's. That will take some time to get resolved because it takes time to do a traffic study and I'm hoping by the time we come back next month, we could be pointing something in front of you saying, this is what the right end, right out is going to look like, what our changes are between us and Little Joe's and address the connectivity with, like Louise was asking for, the connectivity for the two units that are along the western property line, maybe put a set of stairs that comes down off of that, another set of stairs that comes down into that common space to encourage, like you said, encourage residential use of that space. And if you remember correctly, and Daniel brought this to my attention, one of the things we talked about for that common space also was because of the retaining wall, they could do movies for kids on a, on a Saturday night or a Friday night, do a family night movie on those walls and have them sitting down in that big flat area right there looking at the movies at the, on the wall. So, that's, and that's something that could be incorporated as part of the residential package that they work out.
I'm sure you haven't forgotten, but looking at the grading possibility and reducing...
Yes, I know, I, trust me, anywhere I can decrease the height of retaining walls, it's been drilled into my head what the budget is.
Right.
And I need, anything I can do to make it a little, well, along that lines, we had, Tyler and I had a meeting this afternoon with Y-12. Currently, we are showing a retaining wall between us and the grocery store and Y-12. We had a meeting with Y-12 to try and work out a grading easement to eliminate that retaining wall and have a softer slope. So when you come in that drive, you will be looking at a slope that blends in with Y-12. We, it is in discussion phase right now. The person we met with seemed in favor of it, but we can't say that it's going to be addressed because we're dealing with their board of directors and we're still working on it. We would like to get rid of that and make it a softer look between the two because where those two catch basins are behind Y-12 parking right there and our drive is only four foot difference in elevation. So that would create a nice soft area that we could do something and work something out right there and get rid of a retaining wall that we really don't want to build, if we can work in agreement out with Y-12. And we will also work with Little Joe's and try and work out something with them to accommodate what they need to do.
Well, I would think Y-12 would be in favor, assuming that the view from the back there of Y-12 over to the grocery store is attractive enough.
And that's, that's one of the things we talked about when we were out there is working with them. They have existing trees through there, is work with them so that we don't take out any of their trees, soften the slope in between, encourage, because the only water that will, any storm water that will hit that is whatever hits on the slope. The sidewalk, the curb line prevents anything from flowing over the hill. So, and we're routing all that water around the building into something. We haven't completely solved that yet, I'm working on that, like the low impact, like we were talking about, the low impact maybe in front of the grocery store, the combined hybrid system. So, yeah, we were looking at it, nice, it'd be nice to have a nice grass slope between us and some trees on it to soften the look and instead of having an ugly, ugly retaining walls. Even a beautiful retaining wall is ugly, I'm sorry. I don't like retaining walls, but they're a fact of life.
On that note, I wanted to ask for guidance on that open space next to the, that center multifamily building, between the grocery store and the multifamily. Is there any thought process from the commission in terms of assuming if we can work it out to where it makes sense that there, that's an option to push the retaining wall up to the grocery store side of it? Is, is that the direction you would rather us take a hard look at from the staff and from the planning commission side or would you prefer the other way? Because I don't know if we've got some guidance on that clearly.
So, do you mean emphasizing more the use by the residential section than...
Moving that wall here.
Yeah, right.
I think that would be a great amenity for your community. I'm inclined to believe too that, you know, if I go at the grocery store, I'm going, I go to the grocery store and I take my stuff and I go home. But if I'm living there, I want, if I'm living in a apartment, I want something to be able to get outside when the weather's nice, something to do, whether it's just go sit on a bench and read a book or, I'm more inclined to think that would be a great amenity for your, your community.
For your apartments, you mean?
Right, for your apartment community, right.
I agree.
So you would be bringing that up to the, essentially the grade of the apartment complexes as opposed to having it down at the grade of the parking lot of the, of the supermarket?
And, and I think we certainly will want to have a little bit of a setback there from the road to get walk and landscaping, all that, but I think we'll, we'll, we'll look definitely into that and, and see what we can do.
Especially you don't want to look over there at a whole bunch of buggies.
Well, and it'll be loud, you're at the, if you're down at the parking lot level, it'll be very loud, so it'll be, if you raise it up, you're kind of, you're separated from it.
And, and it might also be able to help you with the connectivity issue, you know, along here, you know, from this, from, from that apartment complex.
And also, if I'm at the clubhouse and the pool, I'm not crazy about the fact of I'm at the pool and people are coming into the grocery store and seeing me in my bikini at the pool, so.
Okay, well, Bart, the area you pointed, that area that's kind of pinched by the little bit of parking between us and the loading dock, that, that area right there, the retaining wall cannot move too much.
It up in here?
No, well, where you finished, in that area right there, that's going to have to stay in that area right there.
Yeah.
Because they have to have it so many feet away from the footing of the building from a structural standpoint. I've already had that conversation with the Geotax. That, that portion there, but where it comes around the corner, we could be like five foot off the back of this curb line of the loading area and come around and be like five foot off the sidewalk and come, and then come back in.
If, if we brought that retaining wall down and used some grade...
There's not enough room. Well, coming towards, towards the grocery store, yeah.
I mean, the, the, yeah, we could slope that. That is, that is one thing I wanted to point out too, that there, if we did utilize that open space, because right now it's a flat, zero grade space. 1%. That may be a way to soften up the, the height of that retaining wall, but we would lose some functionality of the open space. But that's another thing that we could do to diminish, because right now that, that's what, 18 feet?
No, it's, by the time it gets to the sidewalk, to the steps, it's down to about seven feet.
Seven feet, so that, that could really minimize that, that retaining wall quite a bit.
And what you might want to do is just show it to the planning commission both different ways and that way they'll have a sense of it.
Okay, we'll do that, we'll, we'll provide two.
What was the reason for not bringing it back next month?
We, we'll be more than happy to.
Did the staff, didn't I reckon, what was it, timing?
Yes. I'll, I'll get with Mark, I got to talk to Mark about two other projects anyway, so I'll get with Mark on Tuesday, or Wednesday, you guys are closed Monday and Tuesday, correct? So I'll get with Mark on Wednesday and coordinate, I'll resumelink so we can be on next month's agenda. Please.
Anything further?
Thank you, we appreciate your input very much, thank you.
So I guess I'll call the December the 21st is our little...
Uh, there's one more item on the agenda.
See, I'm trying to get through this.
What do you want, David? What do you want?
You already talked.
You guys are trying to kick me out before I even get started. I understand, you wanted this to be quick, I, I got you. I thought it was important though to come to the planning commission tonight and talk to you about our finalized strategic plan that the town's been working on for several months. The board of mayor and aldermen started this process. We, we had our first plan approved back in 2010. We've been working through that, it's been a few years, they have a new alderman in place now and so we wanted to update that plan this year and that's what we worked on. And the first thing we wanted to do is just look at our vision and find out, is this the same vision that we have for our community? And it changed a little bit from what we had before. We had a lot of public comment, we had internal comments from our employees and had a great online response as well from the public. But overall, we looked at our, our vision as being Farragut, redefining quality of life with a beautiful, close-knit, connected community where families and businesses thrive. And this is something that we're looking, you know, when you have a vision statement, you're looking at 10, 15 years down the road, what do we want our community to be in the future? And next, we worked on a mission and a value statement and this is more for our employees, the people that work here, our volunteers, our commissioners that also work as part of our, our family here at the town of Farragut. And, and for that mission and values, we came up with Farragut and Appalian and Engage Community Set Apart by a Dedicated Team, Committed to Integrity, Innovation, and Friendly Service. And that's the things that we're going to strive to do each and every day as, as employees here at the town of Farragut. So the next thing we worked on was really determining, what we could call these goals, we call them critical success factors. What is it going to take for us to succeed as a town in the future? And we looked at broad categories and so these seven broad categories are divided up and I'm going to focus on a couple with the planning commission tonight because those are really more focused on built environment that we have here in town. But we talked about recreation, cultural amenities and programs, building and maintaining the town's infrastructure and assets, enhancing the town's financial position, regional leadership and collaboration. We also talked about advancing a high-quality built environment, supporting and caring for a committed workforce and promoting a convenient retail and service destination. So the first one I wanted to talk about with the planning commission in more detail was the building and maintaining the town's infrastructure and assets. And as you can see from the, the statement on your screen, these are aspirational statements that we make. These are what we want to be as a, as a town and we focus on priorities in these areas for what can we get done to try to meet these goals in the next couple of years, basically is what we give our timeline for. So as you can see, we talk about having a safe transportation network for pedestrians, bicycles and automobiles, that our stormwater system is reliable, that our investment in technology parks and buildings is cared for through proper maintenance and improvements. A couple of priority initiatives that we have in this area are assessing our stormwater infrastructure and we're actually undergoing that process right now, as well as building an adequate reserve for improvements of our five-year substandard corridors and prioritized implementation. These are those road projects that we've talked a lot about the last couple of years, what are the extra, what are the roads that we need to get, get improved in order to make sure they're up to our town standards? So those are the two big areas there. Our next strategic plan area of focus is advancing a high-quality built environment. Kind of talked a lot about that tonight with what you do each and every month during site plan reviews. But this is just trying to ensure that there's a high-quality built environment through deliberate formal planning and community engagement, incentivizing innovation and promoting design comes before engineering. A couple of areas here that we're going to focus on are expanding our opportunities to implement best practices for traffic calming. Think everybody knows, we've got a lot of people around town that like to go pretty quick and so we're looking at their, ways we can engineer things to hopefully slow down speed. And then also, we're reviewing, assessing and updating our key elements of the land use plan. And I know some of you are already on that comprehensive land use plan committee that is reviewing some of the new, or reviewing our current plan to see what changes and what options we may need to look at for the future. Our final area I wanted to talk to you about tonight was promoting a convenient retail and services destination. Again, this is another aspirational goal for ours is, is that Farragut is known for family entertainment venues, vibrant commercial centers, neighborhood activity hubs, high building maintenance standards and collaborating with strategic partners to promote business development and that Farragut's town center is a result of a bold vision and effective public-private partnerships. You know, the town center concept is something we've certainly talked about for quite a number of years now and I think the board certainly wants to try to make sure we can do everything in our power to, to help that process along if possible. So some of the priority initiatives in this area are to develop a strategy to create a unique downtown for Farragut, also to explore opportunities for development north of the interstate. I think we still have a lot of opportunities up there. Attract family entertainment venues, whether it's bowling, movies, you name the different activities for residents to enjoy in excess. And then finally, address the advance of online retail and learn how to prosper in a changing environment and also look at zoning ordinances to ensure that sales tax is encouraged. So these are all the things that our board talked about, the board of mayor and aldermen approved that at their meeting just a couple of weeks ago and formalized this whole strategic plan and something we as a staff and hopefully as a community will get behind and continue working on here in the future, so. But that's all I had tonight, but I'll be happy to try to answer any questions that the planning commission may have.
I just want to make one comment that all of these are important, David, but that one of promoting a convenient retail and services destination is at the top of my list. I, I just, every time I drive by that whole strip over there where the old Ingles was and where Dollar General just moved out, I see movies and bowling alleys and things like that there possible. I just hope that comes to fruition before too long.
Well, we work on talking to folks constantly about opportunities out here and it's just a matter of hopefully getting them, getting them ready to invest in our community, that's really what we're trying to do.
How much authority does the town have in getting what the area she's talking about developed?
Well, really it's, you know, obviously we're talking about redevelopment at this point of that site. It really comes down to the property owner first, being willing to work with somebody or, or them do it themselves. Of Ingles is Ingles, Ingles corporate.
That whole complex.
They do, they own all the site there, they're, they're building there and now and the old, old building as well. So it takes them first and then us working with another Realtor, developer, whoever may be, to try to get that site improved. Same thing goes for some of our other big boxes that obviously you see around town as well. Some have difficult land acquisition issues, lease agreements on them that are expiring in the future, there's not a lot of incentive to do much right now. So we're kind of in a waiting pattern on some of that, but hopefully in the, in a couple of years, that will, will be done and we'll be able to do something with that.
This includes the old Kroger too, doesn't it?
Yes, ma'am, it does.
So besides, the incentive is that it is leased on a long-term lease that is continuing to be paid even though the owner is not located there, is that...
Right, when you have a ground lease, which is the situation over there, you have a ground lease and then you have somebody that's leasing the buildings. And so basically that, that ground, the building lease is up in a couple of years and when that happens, the landowner will take over the building. So, so there's not a lot of communication, I'd say, back and forth between the two parties right now, but hopefully in the future, there will be, with one owner owning the whole thing again, we can start working with them to get something to happen on that site.
But right, as far as the town is concerned, we have no input to that now at all, as such.
Well, other than property maintenance, there's not much that we can do. But we certainly try and we talk a lot, we talk and communicate with them, try to see if there's ideas. I think it's just a matter of, in that situation, the lease, just once that's up, I think we'll have a lot more flexibility to work with the current landowner.
I know, somebody connected with the Ingles property told me some time ago that, a long time ago, that, you know, during the recession, they weren't able to get money to do some of the things that they had originally intended to do with that property. Is that prob, is that still an issue with a lot of property around? It's hard to get the financing?
I don't know if that's necessarily the issue anymore. I think what people look at is, is how much retail is out there, how much the per square foot costs are going to be. That's why a couple of projects here on the corner are taking a little longer than we, I mean, they've been approved, it's just a matter of trying to, to fit what their costs are going to be to put in the property to then get the, the, the rent back out of it. And that's what they're trying to, to narrow down and focus on. So, so rent rates are obviously going up because the cost of land and development go up and that's, that's really what they're trying to do is make sure they're market-sensitive to how much they have to put in the property in order to get back their return.
Okay, well, very seldom a week goes by that somebody doesn't ask me why both these pieces up here at Kingston Pike and, and Campbell Station don't, nothing is happening there, or Concord Road and Campbell Station are not happening. And I never know, I always say I think it's financing, financial issue, so that is correct, in a financial issue.
Well, for the, for the property on the southwest corner of Kingston Pike and Campbell Station, the planning commission's done everything you can to help, help that project along. I mean, you've approved it a couple of different times trying to work with the property owner. They told me they hope to be grading here soon, so we'll see, we'll see what happens. And I, and I think once people start seeing dirt move, then they'll feel encouraged about it, but I think they're close.
What do you hear about the development next to the, the veterinary clinics?
The one that's zoned town center district back there? I know Mr. Allen's trying to work feverishly to get some financing for that.
Financing.
Yeah, I think that's the biggest aspect. Anytime you go with retail on the bottom and residential on top, it becomes a little more difficult to get financing for something like that. That's why the project that we talked about tonight, people are going more toward the horizontal mixed use rather than the vertical mixed use, because it's a little easier to get finance.
They call that multiple use. Anybody else have any questions?
Well, thank you all very much, appreciate it, and I hope you have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, David. Have we got that removed off of there?
Yeah, you're bound to. So I want to call the December twenty-first.
My sense of the old-
The team meeting adjourned. Merry Christmas to all, and to all a good night.